Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a workshop, an executive session, and a regular meeting on Tuesday, February 21, 2012, at 5:10 p.m., 5:35 p.m., and 6 p.m. in the commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, located at 1001 East Elizabethus Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Workshop Item A: Discussion Regarding a Brownsville Bike Barn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me here today. Commissioner Gowen, thanks for putting this on, and, uh, talk Commissioner LaGolia the same. I'm following up with the presentation we spoke, we did, uh, last September. Um, I'm Joe Boswell, by the way, Rio Bravo Wildlife Institute. We did a presentation last September on the Rescuing Rusakas Project, and this is a, an update on that, and let you guys know about what we've done with the Brownsville Bicycle Barn. I've seen a lot of people come up here and kind of speak as if we're separate entities, as if, or complain about something which has its place, but want to let you know from the bottom of my heart that this is, we're here to work with the city, as you are a resource to us, we're a resource to you. We, uh, I don't know when to, for a moment, move past the negativity and apathy or whatever else people complain about the city, because with all of our work here and working with specifically these two projects, the Bike Barn and Rescuing Rusakas, as I see our volunteers coalesce from, from UCB, Rio Bravo volunteers, the Brownsville Bike Brigade, which I'll tell you guys about, and the Brownsville Parks and Recreation Department, I feel like all I can see every day is solutions and progress. Uh, there's no time for anything but, and I'm real grateful to have a collaborative city commission, um, which, in the few meetings I've been to, it seems like that's what we are.
I, I do want to tell you one thing.
Sure.
You're doing super work.
Oh, thank you.
And I've, I've been reading all the articles in the newspaper, and you are to be commended, so, uh, know that.
We are, thank you.
Yeah, all of you, all of you.
Uh, so we'll talk about Rescuing Rusakas first, and that started last September. It's a service learning project with Living Way Academy, and it's, uh, it's meant to get students to learn about the Rusakas, do baseline studies, um, learn what we, how pollution affects Rusakas, learn about the biodiversity, and in doing so, create a community resource there. At, we've done three cleanups at La Posada Sanctuary, which, if you guys haven't seen it, I know you know about it, and you-
I do too.
Yeah, it's a beautiful place. There's, um, some endangered Montezuma cypresses there, there's 30 of them there, the next biggest place has five in the country.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a pretty big deal, so we're going to create a sanctuary there. We're creating a new trail system in Lincoln Park, and we just finished our plastic-bottled greenhouse for the revegetation projects, and a trail system at Cabler Park. Uh, in the summer, with PUB's dredging projects, we hope to work with them, to do some citizen science initiatives with them, because it's just as Rescuing Rusakas isn't just Rio Bravo's project, the dredging project's not just PUB's project, it's Brownsville's project. And that's kind of one of the reasons I'm here today, is to extend ourselves to collaborate with the city on a greater level, because just as we want to have citizen scientists study how the dredging affects the Rusakas ecologically and with public use, that's going to have them take ownership of their resources. And that's what we've done with the Rescuing Rusakas Project, getting UTB students involved, and the community involved, and also with the Bike Barn. Um, this, uh, one of the biggest assets for us as a nonprofit has been Chris Patterson, the Parks and Recreation Department. We, with the Rescuing Rusakas Project, all of these projects are done on, on public land with little to no red tape. Every time I meet with Chris, he's going a mile a minute, and he usually lowers a boundary for us to work, provides us with the minimal resources we need to empower us to get us going. And that's what's happened with, with the Rescuing Rusakas Project and with the Bike Barn. As you know, we met, um, how long ago was that? That was this year, right?
About three weeks ago, maybe?
Yeah, okay, less than a month ago, on, um, the Comprehensive Plan for Bicycle and Pedestrian, uh, Movements in Brownsville. And Carol and I left that meeting pretty excited that that was one of the city's, uh, goals and objectives. So we left and, uh, we went and talked, so that's, that's in our mission, in Rio Bravo's mission, to be a more sustainable, healthy city, you get citizens involved, and nature involved outside, they're going to be better stewards of it. And I go on these weekly rides, and every last Friday with the Brownsville Bike Brigade, which started two years ago, and they're just a group of people who have bicycles that wanted to bring a critical mass movement to Brownsville. You guys familiar with Critical Mass?
Sure.
It's a worldwide bicycle movement that is, at the very least, getting people to just organize a group ride, and sometimes, in some cities, even go to the city council meetings and do volunteer events. So, we're one of those cities today, which I think is pretty, pretty great. Um, like I said, it's been three weeks, and we've already made leaps and bounds forward. We don't need to wait to become a bicycle and pedestrian-friendly city, we're here now working on it. This, uh, the Rescuing Rusakas Project and the Bike Barn are connected, like I said, we're building these trail systems. And we added to our current trail systems, like Linear Park, the mountain bike trails, all in glory. I think we can have like a whole network of trails around the city, you know? We're on the same page with that, and we've begun to, to work on it. Uh, in the Bike Barn, I wanted to go speak with the Bike Brigade about the city's goals, about being a more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly city. One of, one of the biggest hindrances that it takes to get people to come on our rides is their bike is broken, or they don't have a bike, they can't afford a bike, or it's just not safe enough to ride. So, we wanted to start a bicycle cooperative where people could come, build their own bicycles, they could learn bicycle maintenance, they could see where the safe routes are in the city currently. We could have, it wouldn't just be outreach for crazy bike brigaders riding their bikes in the city, it would also be for kids and families, so we could have the whole city riding on bicycles, which is one of their stated missions.
You'd make Commissioner Gowen very happy.
So, and also, the, uh, the build your own bike idea with the, with the bicycle cooperative, we're going to go with the build two, bring home your third. So, in your building of the first two bikes, you're going to learn how to take care of your bike, like we're talking about, becoming stewards of your, of your Rusakas, of your community, you're going to be really proud of the bike that you built, and the fact that you built it yourself. So then, those people are going to become leaders of the bicycle movement in Brownsville. And the best part, those two bikes that they built before will be bicycles for public use. So, in the future, expect us to collaborate on what to do with those. When we have a big stable of extra bicycles, that'll be a problem I look forward to having. So just as Chris has opened up the door for us, and empowered Rio Bravo as a nonprofit, empowered the Bike Brigade as independent citizens who care about having a bicycle-friendly city, that's kind of what I'm reaching out for, for the city commission to do, for the city Brownsville leadership.
So Joe, just to be specific, if I want, if I had a broken bike, or bikes, and I didn't want to just throw them in the trash, I could take the parts and give them to the Bike Barn, if I so chose?
Yes, you could donate them to the Bike Barn.
Correct? And then those pieces can be used to refurbish or build another bike? And then if I went to the Bike Barn and said, "I want to volunteer my time and, and participate in building or refurbishing two bikes," then the third bike I get to take?
Exactly, right. Yeah, the, the donating of parts doesn't lead to you getting a new bike, the, exactly, the volunteer hours and the building of two bikes, refurbishing of two bikes, is what gets you the bike. As far as going, if your bike is broken, then that's just going there and using the free resource. And we're going to reach out to different bike shops, I'm a very amateur bicycle mechanic, but I'll be there, you know? And so, it's just, it'll be a resource for people to go and fix their bikes.
So if you're a parent, let's say, and you can't afford to buy all of your children a bike, or even one of your children a bike, you can go and volunteer your time there, and that may be a way that you can provide a bike or bikes for your children?
Most definitely, and we'll be building, yeah, kids' bikes too, all kinds of, all across the board.
Okay.
And another thing I wanted to discuss was, what are, some of the problems I've noticed, there's no way to get from Southmost to UTB, for instance, safely. There are a couple of corridors that aren't yet complete, there's nowhere to hike, uh, I mean, there's nowhere to park your bicycles downtown. What are some, what are some ways that we can work together in that? Because like I said, we're, you know, we took it upon ourselves to start the Bike Barn, we, we want to continue on this momentum. And everything we do, we get more and more people involved, and so, if it's just a small group of people wanting to make a bicycle pedestrian-friendly city, then it's going to be a small group of people who care about it. But everything, every forward momentum we take, if you empower us to, let's say, make a bike lane, or install the bicycle racks ourselves, we're going to be reaching, we're going, because we're going to be very proud of it, and we're going to reach out, let everyone know that we're doing it, and that we're doing it with the city. So what kind of things are we doing, uh, as far as bike racks downtown, bike lanes, pedestrian right-of-ways, things of that nature?
Yeah, I, you know, Joe, again, I think you've got a receptive audience with this commission. Um, I actually went to talk to Terry at Bicycle World when, when Rose was talking about all the bike trails, uh, to see how you could, we could very inexpensively, um, either get the owner of Bicycle World to donate, um, bicycle racks so that we can park our bicycles. Um, and so, I, I think you, you're, you're hitting on at a great time, and when you talk to me about, um, you know, we are one, uh, as a community, it's music to my ears, because there's no way that we can do anything alone without your help with the Bicycle Brigade. Uh, so, let it be known throughout Brownsville, shout it out, you know, "We're going to bike Brownsville, okay?" Aside from fly Brownsville, we're going to bike Brownsville, okay?
And I would encourage the commission to take a visit out to the, to the community garden at Lincoln Park that they run, it's pretty cool.
It really is cool.
And we're also, uh, starting tomorrow, we basically moved into the Bike Barn maybe a week ago, and tomorrow through, yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, from four to seven, we're having a bicycle swap meet. So any reaching out you can do to help us get workshop materials, tools, bicycles, we can start getting this resource going. And what, what sort of, uh, communication or liaison with, with, they say, bike racks downtown, or with bike lanes? Because we're, because we'd like to move forward on this and start doing things, what, who, who do we speak to about this?
I, I think we'll have to get the city manager's office to kind of figure out who, who we can, we need administrative staff to kind of help out. Um, you know, at this particular point, I'm very happy that you're here, and we'll kind of talk about what it is that we, amongst ourselves and, and the, the administration here, um, so that we don't, we don't have a plan. I mean, Commissioner Gowen has been working hard on, and working with the University of Texas, uh, to have their architectural group, uh, give us some, some preliminary plans on, on the hiking bike trails. Uh, so we are, we're not going to move slow, but we are just beginning, and we just need to kind of get some of those little kinks quirked out, and, and, you know, you've got the, um, Charlie's communication, uh, information, um, we'll try to disseminate that as quickly as we can.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And I want to close up with one more thing, just, I was imagining that, the, uh, these trails in Brownsville connected, and one of the things that I've heard, criticism of Brownsville is not taking advantage of ecotourism possibilities, or tourism possibilities in general, and we're working together in that, but imagine if we had a whole city to walk and bike through, and to advertise it as that, coming off the, the back of the plastic bag van, having a walk and bike city with public bicycles, incredible.
It will be incredible, and, and trust me-
Leader of the valley.
-when we're going to tell you that it's going to happen, and I think, uh, regardless, I mean, Commissioner LaGolia?
Realistically, as when the come, the plan does come into fruition, take into account that a lot of the times, we're going to be intersecting state highways, and so, especially by the university, so, we do need the time from the, from so much from the state and, and certain sections, from the federal government, you know, the, the, the time that we need allocated to be able to do it, but it's a wonderful project. Like I told you, just, you know, like Mayor says, we're not going to, it's not going to take long, but understand that there are other powers that be that we need to contact to be able to make this a possibility.
Yeah, most definitely, and we're, and we're here to work.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we, we need your help, okay? And God willing, one of the things that I told some of the commissioners over the, over the weekend was, you know, when any of these community projects comes to, to light, and we need to have community meetings, um, we will try to schedule them over at the Quetos Building, where we, we don't have to climb stairs or go by elevators, but just kind of walk in and get, get your Bicycle Brigade over there, just ride over there, because we don't have much parking.
At the where?
The, the Quetos Building.
Okay.
Quetos Building on Madison.
Great, I'd love that, thank you.
Okay, we'll do it.
Thanks, Joe.
You need five minutes to go into executive sessions? Okay. Anybody have any announcements they want to make, as long as, I mean, I, I like the outfits.
Just to take advantage of all the wonderful activities to support Mr. Amigo, Sombretto Fest, Charro Days, uh, their excellent events that definitely demonstrate the culture and the people of our community, and of course, spend some money, contribute to our sales tax and our hotel occupancy tax, so that we can continue to provide additional resources to our residents.
Okay. Now, I, I think that when we get into the regular meeting after the executive session, there's probably a few announcements with regards to some of the activities that the Chamber of Commerce has got going, Mr. Amigos from Sombretto Fest, uh, Mr. Amigo should be coming in tomorrow around two o'clock in the afternoon, um, we will have an open house and, uh, at the Quetos Building tomorrow, uh, at about 3:30, make sure everybody is, is there. Um, and so I'm sure there's other events that we'll, um, that we'll talk about, I'll have every commissioner tell them about their favorite event, okay?
Well, Mayor, the one thing I would just like to emphasize for the viewing audience, and hopefully, I don't know, we, we run at different times, but, you know, to use extreme caution, still, you know, safety first, take care of the children, watch them as, as you go to Sombretto Fest, as you go to the parades, everything, that you keep an eye on your kids, that's very important. I mean, Charro Days, to me, is about the children, and it's about keeping those, uh, these types of festivities and these types of celebrations alive, but most, first and foremost, we need to take care of our kids. So if everybody would just please keep an eye on their children, keep them safe at all times, so that we can continue to enjoy all the festivities.
That's a great message, thank you, Commissioner. Oh my God, the cavalry's coming. Oh my God, the cavalry's coming.
Larry Brown. No Star Wars?
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
I thought you were supposed to be flying Brownsville, not driving, riding into Brownsville.
And this is the first time in history that our city commission luncheon sells out completely for our Mr. Amigos, so, looks like it's going to be a real, this Mr. Amigo is really, I guess-
All the girls like him.
Right.
It's not because of us, okay?
That, that did kind of help.
No, but it's good, and besides that, he's a, you know, the commissioner and I got a chance to visit with him in Mexico City, and he's an excellent fellow, uh, just as, as, as the bigger corazón as, as you'll want to meet, so, I think everybody will have a good time. Can we, can we go into-
Yes. Executive session, Item A: Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Economic Development. An executive session, Item B: Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Properties Struck Off From and Private Bids to Cameron County for itself and Other Taxing Jurisdictions from a Tax Resale Held on November 1st, 2011.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to move to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. to order, and we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance, and, uh, Michael, I'm going to see if your soccer team would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, would that be good? We all stand up? Y'all start it. I pledge-
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas-
Texas, one state, under God.
One and indivisible.
The invocation will be given by Pastor Juan Morales.
Heavenly President's Father, we come before you this evening, giving you thanks for this wonderful country that you have given us, Lord God, and thank you for this great city of Brownsville. Mighty God, as citizens of this city, along with the mayor and the commissioners, mighty God, we come before you according to James, Chapter 1, verse 5, uh, James, Chapter 1, verse 2 and 3. Lord God, you have said in thy word that if we ask of wisdom, you will give it to us. And Lord God, now, more than ever, we need the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding to run this city of Brownsville. And I pray that this, that you will grant, that you will grant this wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to the mayor, to the commissioners, and to all the leaders of the city of Brownsville. Lord God, we pray for this celebration that we are getting ready to celebrate, Charro Days. I pray, Lord God, for peace. I pray that every citizen, Lord God, will have a good time. Mighty God, I pray for the schools, for the BISD, the students, the teachers, principals, superintendent. Lord God, I pray that you will bless them in a mighty way as they perform in this Charro Days and the parade. Mighty God, we love you, we praise you, and we give you all the honor and all the glory. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Okay, Estela, I think now we have the actions that were in executive session, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Action on Items Discussed in Executive Session. Item A: Consideration and Action, and appropriate action, if any, on Items Discussed in Executive Session and Concurrent Adoption of Resolution Number 2012-004 to authorize the Historic Downtown Heritage Department to file a grant pre-application for Neighborhood Stabilization Program 1.
Mayor, I move to advise staff to continue as advised in executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Item B: Discussion and Possible Action on Resolution Number 2012-007 through Resolution Number 2011-018, approving the various bids received from the tax resale held on November the 1st, 2011, for the properties as listed in the agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve and to advise Leinbarger and Gogan to continue with the final procedure for the sale.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Mayor, going back to Item A, do we also need to approve the work pushing?
It approves it already. Concurrent adoption.
Is that what the-
Concurrent adoption.
Isn't that what the motion was addressing?
Yes, sir.
No?
It was to allow people to proceed-
I'm sorry, maybe I want to-
To advise to continue, but with, okay, if it's due to possible action, uh, I move to bring it back, back into order.
Right, and amend your-
Yeah.
-motion to-
A second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with the amendment, uh-
I move to approve, action item A.
Okay, reapprove, action item A. Mayor's report.
One more on the vote, ma'am.
Huh?
We need to redo the vote, so I move to approve, Commissioner Gowen, seconds.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry about that.
Okay, we're still on Item B? No, no, we're done with that one, I'm sorry.
No, I, I think we've, we've got all the action that we need on the items discussed in executive session.
Yes, sir.
The next thing is the mayor's report.
Yes, sir.
And I, um, I'm going to make a, just a real brief report, uh, because I think this is of, of some interest to the citizens of Brownsville. We are a member of the United States Conference of Mayors, and, um, while we were in DC, um, the Mayor's Institute on City Design, um, was interested in the city of Brownsville and how they were going to go forward in their restoration of the historical downtown area. And so, um, last week, I attended a seminar, um, in Birmingham, whereby the mayor's conference paid for our way to go there, and paid for everything in relation thereto, but I wanted the, uh, we had the help of a gentleman by the name of Steve Lewis, who came down here and spoke with the Planning Commission, uh, Planning and Zoning with Ramito and with Ben and Roland, and, um, he is a, an architect and a urban planner from Los Angeles, and the whole idea was to go there and to plant the ideas of what it is that we had envisioned for the city. And then we had the help of a lot of, um, there were six other mayors, we had the, the input of all the other mayors, as well as four other urban, uh, planners and architects, and I intend to more fully explore this, um, with the city commission at a later date, we'll hopefully get a workshop, um, but it was very instructive, and, um, we, uh, we're going forward with a lot of the planning, and hopefully, um, the, it'll come to fruition, and the citizens of, uh, Brownsville will get a chance to see, uh, the work that this city commission and, uh, the city manager's office is doing with regards to restoring the downtown area. That concludes my report. Any commissioners' reports?
Uh, no, Mayor, I just, uh, real quick, I wanted to thank, uh, our city manager, Charlie Kabler, our police chief, uh, Chief Orlando, and, uh, our previous chief, Garcia, for working out this, uh, issue we had with the taxi drivers and the rotation at the multimodal. Uh, you guys, you guys did a great job, you and your staff, and I want to thank you, because that's, that's in my district, so it was very important to me, thank you.
Very good, thank, thank you, Mr. Rizzi. Um, we'll now go to the proclamations. Do you have the proclamations, Mia? Okay. The first proclamation has to do with the Rio Grande Valley Youth Soccer Association, so if, uh, the soccer association would come inside here. Michael, they just, yeah, Michael Jones and, and company, come on up here and stand. Okay.
Does anyone want to say? Well, the kid finished. Thanks.
This?
Yeah. My, your-
[coughs]
[inaudible]
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 While all, while these soccer boys are coming through here, let me explain to you that there's some coaches and some parents along with the team, and there are various different groups, age groups, that participated in the championship tournament. And I think these are the Real Madrid, is that the first ones? Okay, and these are the state champions, the Brownsville Real Madrid. Now, I will read the proclamation. Well, do you have... We were trying to get video of all of these, but I don't know which ones are working or not, Mr. Jones. Michael, is this video...
This is the correct one.
Okay. Okay, I'll tell you what. Let me go ahead and read the proclamation, and then I'd like for you to roll that film if possible. Whereas four Brownsville soccer teams came away from the December 2011 State Championship Finals in Houston as state champions after winning championships in local competition and at the Western District Tournament in San Marcos in early September. And whereas there are forty teams in the Rio Grande Valley Youth Soccer Association, part of the South Texas Youth Soccer Association, and all began to play in September of 2011, finishing in the championship round two months later. And whereas one of the four state championships teams is Brownsville Real Madrid, which won the Under-12 Championship. And whereas Brownsville Real Madrid teams members include Anthony Blair Avert, Fernando Barrientos, Eduardo Ramirez, Roberto Melendez, José Salazar, Victor Lial, Enrique David Rodríguez, Travis Jones, Mario Ríos, José Arucio, Francisco Chapa, Eloy Lozoya, Sebastián Benavides, and coaches Gabriel Ramirez and Fernando Barrientos. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and congratulate Brownsville Real Madrid, one of the four local soccer teams that brought state championship trophies to our city, done this 21st day of February 2012, Tony Martinez Mayor and the City Commission. [inaudible] Congratulations.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next team?
These are the Barracudas next?
The Barracudas.
The Barracuda, okay. These are under 11. Okay. Okay. Okay, there you go. Okay, now, a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Brownsville Rio Valley Youth Soccer Association. Now, these guys are also state champions, Brownsville Barracudas. Whereas four Brownsville soccer teams came away from the December 2011 State Championship Finals in Houston as state champions after winning championships in local competition and at the Western District Tournament in San Marcos in early December. And whereas there are forty teams in the Rio Valley Youth Soccer Association, part of the South Texas Youth Soccer Association, all began play in September of 2011, finishing in the championship round two months later. And whereas one of the four state championship teams is the Brownsville Barracudas, which won the Under-11 Championship. And whereas Brownsville's Barracuda teams members include Israel Varón, Gabriel García, Brian Guevara, Paulino López, Hector Kinder, Gustavo Morales, Jaime Nava, Ives Vázquez, Orlando Sánchez, Javier Chávez, Mariano López, Eduardo Martinez, coaches José Chávez, Gustavo Morales, and trainer Fernando Moreno. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Brownsville Barracudas, one of the four local soccer teams that brought state championship trophies to our city, done this the 21st day of February 2012, Tony Martinez Mayor and the City Commission. Is there a deep film on this one? Barracudas, congratulations. Thank you very much. Okay, the next one, these are the Brownsville Toros? Okay. These guys are under 14. Okay, a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Brownsville Rio Valley Youth Soccer Association state champions, Brownsville Toros. Whereas four Brownsville soccer teams came away from the December 2011 State Championship Finals in Texas as state champions after winning championships in local competition and Western District Tournament in San Marcos in early December. And whereas there are forty teams in the Rio Valley Youth Soccer Association, part of the South Texas Youth Soccer Association, and all began to play in September of 2011, finishing in the championship round two months later. And whereas one of the four state championship teams is the Brownsville Toros team, which won the 14-under Championship. And whereas Brownsville Toros team members include Vivian Aguirre, Alexis Anzures, Jacob Amy, Alejandro Castañeda, José Chávez, Óscar Córdoba, Julio de la Garza, Bentley Galván, Victor Granados, Bruno Morales, Jesús Muniz, Andrés Rico, Arturo Salazar, Uriel Sepúlveda, Enrique Soto, Humberto Trevino, and coaches Gilberto Rico and Javier Medina. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and congratulate Brownsville Toro team, one of the four local soccer teams that brought state championship trophies to our city, done this 21st day of February 2012, Tony Martinez Mayor and our City Commissioners. Congratulations, guys. Well done. Okay, it looks like the... Left the girls. Okay. Got a lot of champions here today. Michael? The best of the best, that's what's right. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Brownsville Rio Valley Youth Soccer Association state champion, Brownsville Barcelona Girls Team. Whereas four Brownsville soccer teams came away from the December 2011 State Championship Finals in Houston as state champions after winning championships in the local competition and the Western District Tournament in San Marcos in early December. And whereas there are forty teams in the Rio Valley Youth Soccer Association, part of the South Texas Youth Soccer Association, and all began play in September of 2011, finishing in the championship round two months later. And whereas one of the four state championship teams is the Brownsville Barcelona Girls Team, which won the Under-14 Championship. And whereas Brownsville Barcelona Girls Team members include Ashley Barra, Nicole Burhart, Annette Marti, Julia Mesa, Paulina Varela, Victoria Vidal, Marisa Chávez, Adrian Davis, Estrella Espinoza, América García, Sofía Matar, Corina Medina, Frida Palomo, Hilda Valdi Beisio, Izel García, Andrea Morales, coaches Gustavo A. Morales, Cooper Davis, and trainer Juan García. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of the said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and congratulate Brownsville Barcelona Girls Team, one of the four local soccer teams that brought state championship trophies to our city, done on this the 21st day of February 2012, Tony Martinez Mayor and the City Commission. Congratulations. I'd like to recognize Michael Jones.
First of all, I do not coach any of these teams. All the credit goes to the coaches, the parents, and the players. My son plays on the Real Madrid team, but I know most of the kids, coaches, and parents here. I'd just like to say that there's something that we missed in Houston. We have four first-place teams from Brownsville. There was also two seconds and one third. The gentleman in the Houston Sports Complex, I was speaking to him on the way out, he said, you know, "Next year, we're not allowing Brownsville to come." He was being humorous, he was being generous, he complimented us on our team. And one thing I would like to say here, the hard work and effort, of course, has paid off, but these kids are now 11, 12, 13, 14. Years ago, my son included, these kids used to play against each other. They were five, six, and seven years old, and played against each other, fierce competition at eight years old. It just shows you what happens when the good things come together. We produce four state champions. And I'd like to say thank you very much to the City Commission and the mayor for allowing us the time to show off our medals. And thank you very much. And once again, to all the coaches, I was asked to coordinate this. It wasn't easy. And just say a few words, so thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for all. Estela, the next proclamation will be read by Commissioner Samora.
Shriners, Paul Underwood.
Mr. Paul Underwood.
All right.
Hey. Hello, hi. Ready? A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, proclaiming February 28, 2012, National Pancake Day and Shriners Hospitals for Children Day. In our city, whereas Shriners Hospitals for Children is a national nonprofit organization committed to giving children the opportunity to live a more normal life. And whereas Shriners Hospitals for Children gives children the opportunity to receive treatment for orthopedic problems, severe burns, and spinal cord injuries, and provides them with a head start in developing a normal life, regardless of the patient's ability to pay. That is essential to becoming successful and contributing adults. And whereas on February 28, 2012, Shriners Hospitals for Children and the International House of Pancakes will join together to encourage people to donate to Shriners Hospitals for Children activities in our city. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby declare February 28, 2012, to be National Pancake Day and Shriners Hospital for Children Day. And further encourage all our citizens to support all local efforts for this worthy cause, done on this, the 28th day of February 2010... Done on this, the 28th day of February 2010, 2012, excuse me, signed the Mayor and the City Commission.
I'm going to ask you to say a few words up there, but I'm going to introduce the city to George, the President. And President George, I happen to be very familiar with your organization, and you all do just beautiful work, so thank you very much. Go ahead.
Well, I'm George Iger, president of the Tipitix Shrine Club here in Brownsville. And I want to thank the Mayor, City Commissioners, and the City of Brownsville for receiving this. Also, the International House of Pancakes, on this one day, have intent to raise $2.7 million for the Shriners Hospital Organization. So, we hope that that'll carry on and go forward. And I think that's all I had to say.
Okay, thanks again. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Estella, Commissioner Gallon will, will read the next one.
Designating Brownsville a Wow City.
Proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville declaring February 2012 as Brownsville Wow Month in our city. Whereas the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau has created a new marketing tool, Brownsville Wow, to help with promoting our city. And whereas February was chosen to inaugurate Brownsville Wow, since February is heavy on celebrations, including Charo Days, Mr. Amigo, and Zumbro Fest. And whereas Brownsville remains the city on the border by the sea, but will further enhance, be enhanced by Brownsville Wow and its accompanying slogan, Always a Fiesta. And whereas Always a Fiesta then is more than an advertising tool, it is a way of life. And whereas Brownsville believes in the Wow, Brownsville is Wow. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of this authority vested by the charter of said city and on behalf of our citizens, do hereby declare February 2012 to be Brownsville Wow Month in our city. Done this 21st day of February 2012, the Mayor and the City Commissioners.
Danny, would you, would you address us for just a minute, just kind of tell the people what the, what your, all these guys that don't have beards?
Oh, wow.
Tell them what's going to happen to them.
Well, I'm going to tell one. The other ones, smart ones, have beards. It's a tradition in Brownsville that we grow beards Charo Days. And it's been that tradition for a long, long time. We brought it back six, seven years ago. And we did it for free for a while just to teach Brownsville that to grow the beard. But the last couple of years, we've attached ourselves to the non, as a nonprofit with the Historical Brownsville Museum. So, we're collecting about $5,000 every year to donate directly to them. And the, you know, I'm sorry, but it's $20 if we catch you on the streets, Ben, and it's $100 if we go to your, your business for a pickup. So, that's what we do all week, and all we're trying to do is continue with the tradition of Charo Days, because you know what? Charo Days doesn't end this weekend, it's always a fiesta in Brownsville.
Danny, good work.
Thank you all.
Good work, all of you. Thank you very much. Estella, I think consent items, go ahead.
Item, item four, consent agenda items A through D.
Mayor, I'd like to move out of consent for A. And once we go into for A specifically, we could go into 5C.
Is, is the motion to go through 5C through C and D, is that right? Is that the motion?
For A, for A to, to continue in, in with the approval of the minutes of the work, of the workshop and special meeting on January the 5th, 2012.
So, you're pulling an item out of the consent?
I'm not sure that I'm understanding.
I'm going to, item 4A in the current, in the current consent agenda items. And once in 4A, I'd like to open 5C, the approval of the minutes of the workshop and special meeting on January the 5th, 2012.
Mr. Lagode, I think that would be the following date, December, January the 5th was a workshop?
It would probably be January 17th.
Is it the January 17th? I'm so sorry.
You're right. So, that's what I'm saying, I'm not sure.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Repeat that one more time.
Sorry about that. Going to the January 17th.
Are you pulling 4A out of it? Is that the only one you're?
4A out of, out of the current.
Consent item, so is your motion to approve B, C, and D?
Correct.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And specifically dealing with item C, I'd like to revisit on the, the board appointments. I'd like to revisit the, the motion that was entitled for those citizens living outside of the city of Brownsville and serving on our boards. I'd like to revisit that item.
Okay. I think the Robert rules of order are if you have it on a consent item and you want to put it in for a discussion, that we're going to have to do it at the next meeting, and that'll be fine. But I don't, I don't think you can come into an agenda as a consent item and then drop it out without notice to all Commissioners and the public.
It's simply a matter of convenience where there's no objection to approval of the minutes, which is basically a formality. If, if one of the Commissioners wants to revisit a, a specific issue, the proper thing would be to put it back on the agenda for reconsideration.
Yeah, and, and the reason being that it puts you on notice, I think that's the provision. It's almost like a constitutional, you have to be put on notice as to what's going on.
That's not a problem.
So, we'll, we'll withdraw it off of the consent item, we'll, we'll leave A off, and then Estella, we'll put it on for discussion at the next meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Public hearings?
Public hearing, item number five, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 2012-1553, to authorize the city manager to abandon and close a portion of a 10-foot utility easement located at Lot 1 in east half of Lot 2, Block 8 of East Brownsville Edition, Section 1, in exchange for retaining a 20-foot utility easement within the same property.
Good evening. My name is Eduardo Santillan with the Engineering Department. The intention is to remove the easement presently located under an existing building. All the utilities have been relocated and our department recommends approval to abandon it.
This is the oldest Torga building?
Yes, I think so.
The back portion of it?
The back, I believe it's a.
The cement portion of it in the back?
Mr. Trevino, the owner is here, probably he can answer that question, I'm not really sure.
No, just, just for clarification, it's.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's already been done, really, so we just, we're just.
Okay, this is, this is a public hearing. Any, any comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Would you close?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing closed.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item six, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 2012-1554, to extend employee benefits to employees of the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation, otherwise known as BCIC.
Okay, thanks.
Back in November of last year, the City Commission approved a new service agreement with the BCIC, which permitted the BCIC to give the city notice if it intended to privatize certain functions which were being provided under an administrative services contract. And I believe that contract, the vote on that was unanimous. This commission passed that unanimously back in November. This ordinance basically is a way to safeguard the employees who are currently working with the city of Brownsville, to make sure that nobody gets caught without insurance. That's all it is, okay? Basically, Section 1 basically states that this ordinance would be immediately effective. Section 2 that states that any employee of the BCIC who performs administrative services for the BCIC may, in other words, it doesn't say shall, it says may, it gives the city the permission to include them in the group plan, including healthcare and retirement upon request by the BCIC. And then three, if there is such a request for a specific employee and the city does decide to extend the benefits to that specific employee, then the city shall require reimbursement from the BCIC for the city's actual cost for providing membership in the employee benefits plan. This, this ordinance is basically in keeping with the service agreement, which was unanimously passed by the City Commission in November of last year, where the BCIC had the right to go to the city and give them notice of intent to privatize a portion or all of the services which were being provided by the city under the administrative services contract, and require reimbursement from the BCIC, consistent with state law. That's what the commission approved, and that's what, that's what this ordinance is about. This ordinance is simply a way to make sure that the, the employees, the one or two or three employees, whatever it is that the BCIC decides to privatize, are not caught without insurance benefits.
Counselor, we re-entered into an agreement with the BCIC for them to continue. In January, they exercised their right to leave the city, correct?
Yeah, I, I don't know what you mean by leave the city. In, in the services.
In other words, we received, we received notice from the BCIC board in January, after we had renewed our contract with them in November.
Okay.
We received written notice in January that they were going to be removing themselves from the city, correct?
What happened was in November 1st, there was a workshop. And there were a number of things which were discussed. And one of those things was the, the service agreement, one was the sports park maintenance agreement, and one was the amendment to the bylaws, all right? And I remember both Dr. Brera and myself, I gave a presentation to the City Commission on the changes which were in the service agreement. And one of those changes was the BCIC, under that new agreement, which this commission voted on, had the right to give the city 60 days' notice if, if it intended to privatize a portion of the services. That, that the City Commission, basically the city of Brownsville has been providing administrative services to the BCIC, which the BCIC has been paying for, okay? And, but, but basically it gave the BCIC the right to say, you know, maybe there's a portion of those services that we want to provide ourselves, and we're, in other words, we're not going to pay the city for them because we're going to provide those services ourselves instead of contract with the city. So, the contract gave the BCIC the right to give the city 60 days' notice, to withdraw from that a portion, all or a portion of that service agreement. That's right. So, the, 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 the action that was taken by the BCIC in January was consistent with the contract which was approved by this commission in November.
I didn't take it that way in November, but fine, if that's the way you, you stated it. Does 4B intend to reimburse the city for the cost of these employees being on the planet?
Yes, Commissioner, if you look at item number three, section three, the ordinance requires reimbursement in a matter of actual cost. It's, it's not a matter of cost shifting at all, it's just a matter of ensuring that these employees are not caught without insurance benefits. Section three of the proposed ordinance basically states that the, the city would require reimbursement from the BC for the actual cost of providing, including these employees and any kind of benefits. We just want to look out for the employees, that's all.
What about 4A? Does 4A currently have any employees in this, in this kind of?
First of all, 4A is not on the agenda.
No, my question is, because they are the same type of a commit.
They're two different corporations.
Well, I realize that.
You know, Commissioner, the only thing is like.
But they serve the same workers, they receive their money from the same.
From sales types, revenue.
From sales.
No, 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 I, I understand. What I'm saying to you is that they're two corporate entities, and they have two different bylaws, and I think if we want to discuss, that's what I'm saying, is that if we want to discuss 4A, then we're going to have to put it on the agenda. I, I hate to be disruptive, but, you know, that's part of what the Texas government code talks about, is notice. So, we're going to discuss some action. This is public hearing for, for B.
And this is a specific ordinance, and all this ordinance is, is it gives the City Commission and the, and the 4B a way to provide, extend insurance benefits to these employees. That's all, that's all that's before the City Commission right now.
I fully understand. Like I said, I think, I think this discussion was had in the sense it's a bookkeeping matter more than anything, because what happens is that, you know, 4B has to reimburse the city for whatever it is, but they're part of the group plan, which is the only way that we can economically afford it.
Well, what's, what's happening right now, Mayor, is the, the, under the old service agreement, that the 4B was paying the city a certain amount of money, and that the city was providing these employees and benefits for these employees. So, if, if basically, if the, if, if one or more employees become employees of 4B, it would allow the city to continue to be able to provide insurance for them, but it would require the 4B to pay the city for the cost of those benefits. So, it's, it's not going to cost the city anything.
I, I'm, I'm fully, if anybody else doesn't, would like to discuss it, that's fine, but.
I think it's important to point out that this is not an unusual arrangement. In fact, many 4Bs use the same laws to be able to have their own employees, but cover them with insurance and retirement funds within the city. And that's perfectly legal, and we've discussed it with the Comptroller's Office and the Attorney General's Office in person.
And, and quite frankly, economically, that corporation, either one of those, you know, separate corporations, regardless of their funding, they wouldn't be able to afford insurance for those, because it has to go through the group plan of the city, and that's the only thing.
What I don't understand is why we are making one employee, which is essentially the executive director, an employee of BCIC, yet we're not doing the same thing for the other employees that were at the sports park.
They are, no, no, they're all free.
They're all going to be under BCIC.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, I have a question for Estella, because the ordinance that you just provided me with, counsel, is different than what was in my agenda packet.
Yes, sections two and three were left off. I don't know how that happened. If you, actually, the ordinance that was put in the packet didn't do anything. It simply said, it had a bunch of preamble, it said it'll be immediately effective, and then it didn't actually do anything. The note, the title on the ordinance was extending the benefits to the city. So, obviously, two and three were inadvertently left off, I'm not sure how that happened.
And then essentially, I mean, there are lots of little housekeeping issues, as, as you guys call it. Shouldn't we also, if we're doing this, shouldn't we be revisiting the contract agreement between the city and BCIC to reflect these changes? That way, if we need to cover any other bases, we can do that? I mean, I don't understand why we're doing it in piecemeal, when we really should go back and look at the overall contract between BCIC and the city.
Well, Commissioner, you had the opportunity to look at the contract with the BCIC, in fact, you voted for it back in November.
I understand that, but this item was not in that contract, and it should be.
No, but, no, but what was in the contract was a, was a provision that permitted the 4B the ability to withdraw from the service agreement. This is simply a way to provide insurance to those employees, and I think everybody agrees that's fair.
Like I told you earlier, in November, we agreed, yes, to the contract. We did not know that they were going to. We came back in January, back into session, and we received a letter that 4B is going to, you know, in essence, you know, part ways with the city for their administrative services. So, I believe that at that time, like we did in the past, that we had, that, you know, maybe a joint, a joint meeting between the BCIC and the, and the City Commission could have been in order.
Actually, what was approved in November, correct me if I'm wrong, was allowing the 4B board to, to basically, if we wanted to make a change, be able to take the existing budget, which we agreed with finance was not going to change, because we did not want to put any extra added burden on the city, is that we could take the, the budget per month, the management budget and, and all of that, and take it per month, so that if we decided to go private at six months, or eight months, or whatever those months were, the city was assured that they were not going to have to go into the general fund to change any of the numbers. And so, that, that's what was agreed on in November. If you didn't understand it, well, that's fine, but we agreed, you all agreed to allow the board to be able to make a month-to-month, or in this case, a 60-day determination to change the setup. I would also point out that originally, the director of 4B was employed by 4B. How that changed through time, I have not, I don't know, I've never been, I've never had an answer to that. So, in essence, we're also returning to the original setup when 4B began, which is 4B Board employees, or corporation, rather. employees, or corporation, rather, employs its administrative team.
This is nothing the city hasn't done before, and this is nothing other cities haven't done. The, the, the thing is, there's, there's different ways that, uh, different cities provide administrative services to the four B. Some four Bs provide them internally, some provide them with a contract with the city. It just depends on the city and how it chooses to do it. I, I mean, I think what's important, Commissioner, is that the only thing here, you know, and I realize there may be some issues, in different expression, different points of opinion, I, I think that, uh, I thought it was clear back in November first, that when we presented this thing, that the four B would have the right to give notice to terminate the contract and privatize some of it. I, I also think that the only thing that's here on the agenda is a provision that allows insurance for a couple employees, uh, just, so their families, and they, they and their families don't have a lapse in insurance coverage. So I, I think that's, what we need to keep in mind, is that's what's on the agenda here today.
Well, well, counsel, I do understand that B C I C has the authority to provide sixty-day notice, but ultimately, the city commission can say yes or no to accept that notice, because we do have direct oversight as per government statute over B C I C.
That's what you voted on in November.
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner, you, you, you voted to give the B C I C the right to provide that notice back in November, and you voted-
And I have a right now to accept or not accept.
You know, I think that the city commission has budgetary control over vetoing, but I think there's a difference between having certain budgetary control over vetoing certain issues, and getting into dictating to the four B board what the four B board chooses to do. And that's why there's a different board, otherwise, you'd have everything decided by the city commission.
And this is still public hearing, so, you know, we can continue with this public hearing, and if anybody else wishes, I mean, you've got any questions, if anybody, or anybody else has got questions, it's, it's time to, to speak up.
I mean, I'd, I'd just like to point out to the commission that this is simply a matter of extending insurance, and that the ordinance requires the city to bill the four B, and the four B to pay the city for the cost of the benefits. So, it's not gonna cost the city anything.
It's not an extra cost to the city, it's not an extra cost to four B, it's just changing employers, instead of here, it's here. And benefits stay the same, because we didn't want to burden the people that are employed by four B or the city in its budgetary process by changing our numbers midstream. That's all it is, it's simply shifting employers.
Mr. Kabbler, when I came into office in two thousand and three, and I met Dr. Barrera, Dr. Barrera was an employee of the city. Now, since its inception, do you know at what point Dr. Barrera was, or that her position belonged to the four B, because for as long as I've known, she was an employee of the city of Brownsville, working for the four B?
About the time that I came into the city is, I mean, I left the police department, came to the city, they were going through the process of, of hiring, and, and evolved, the four B was evolving during that time. My recollection is that the four B did the interviews and made the selection process, but my understanding has always been that the, that she and the employees of four B were, uh, a part of the city, city employment.
That's not what Human Resources told Jeff Johnson.
That's my recollection, Commissioner.
I'm just concerned about the, I mean, I understand exercising, you know, providing the benefits to those B C I C employees, but will they still be the same employees? And what happens with all these changes, and what happens to those individuals who have been working all these years with B C I C, do they go back and they still have an opportunity to stay and remain with the city?
Yes, they do, they can apply for the jobs that have been open.
Oh, so they have to reapply for new jobs?
In keeping with a new job that's posted, it's open to the public.
So they were initially city employees, then they were then responsible for B I, B C I C. Now they go back and they have to reapply for city jobs, it just does not sound very-
Hang on, I, I don't know that any decision by the B C I C as to who would be hired has been made yet, okay?
But it's been advertised.
So, right, but we don't know at this point whether one or more or all would be rehired. We know they're going through an interview process, so I think it's a little premature to second guess what-
Counsel, I, you know, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt anybody, but, you know, we have to stick to the agenda as what the items are pertaining to, this is, we're going beyond that, and I'm, I'm happy to visit all those if we put them on the agenda. But it's not, the only thing that's on the agenda is, if we wanna read it, is regarding the employee benefits to the employees of the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. And I, I, I love the discussion, the problem is, is that when we put something on the agenda, it's for the purposes of notice. So when you go a, a far field from what's on the agenda, then, then we're gonna create problems for ourselves.
No, Mayor, that's correct, the only thing on the agenda is providing the benefits.
If you would stick strictly to the questions with regarding to the employee benefits, I think that's all that's on the table.
That's correct.
Not a problem, I move to table this item, uh, to the next meeting, and uh, we'll announce to the city secretary some items that we would like to bring back pertaining to this and other issues at the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Or, I mean, move to close public hearing first.
Yeah, we got, we, we, that's what I'm saying, public hearing comes first, as any other public hearing. We have to have a motion to, to close public hearing.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Move to table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 I think we're gonna take, have to have a head count.
To table.
Yes.
Motion, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, and I'd like to have a word after the meeting, please.
Item number seven.
Item number seven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number twenty twelve dash two thirty-five point sixty-two, to amend the Code of Ordinances, chapter three forty-eight zoning, article six overlay districts, by amending section three forty-eight dash ten forty-three B one, downtown Brownsville Entertainment Overlay District, by removing block eighty-five lots one through six from the entertainment overlay district.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, we have received a letter from the property owner owning, um, these lots to be removed from the entertainment district. The entertainment district does not allow daycare centers, it's a prohibited use. The applicant would like to have a daycare center or lease to a daycare center at this location. So we ask that these ordinance be amended, uh, the entertainment district ordinance be amended to remove this particular lots.
Let me, let me see, what, what do I, in other words, what's the effect of that, removing of that overlay?
Yes, Mayor, these lots are located right in, uh, in front on Adams Street to the, uh, Putnik Elementary School. So, uh, the effect would be that this applicant would no longer be allowed to have or lease in the future to any of the businesses, uh, allowed in the entertainment district, such as bars, with restaurants, things of that nature.
And I, forgive me for, I needed the explanation, but I, I thought that was correct.
Yes, and, and, and-
Uh, Ben, if I'm not mistaken, that, that property is right on the edge of the district, right?
That's correct, so, so that's why we-
Won't be right in the middle?
That's correct, so, so if it was right in the middle, of course, we would be opposed to it, but since right in the fringes of the entertainment district and right in, right in front of a school, then this goes along to, to having a daycare center there. And the applicant understands that she no longer will be able to come in the future and try to apply for a wet zone in that area. So I think it goes hand in hand, I mean, the ordinance was passed for all this area to be an entertainment district, but as we go along and we promote business, we are gonna have to fine tune, uh, the ordinance, so this is a fine tuning, and it, and it's, I think, a correct thing to do.
Okay, this is public hearing, anybody else have any, any comment?
Move to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed, I hear a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number twenty twelve dash nine nineteen dash I, to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brownsville, amending chapter one-ten records, section one-ten dash one-twenty-eight rates and charges generally, to additional, to add additional labor costs involving vehicles with rollovers, winch, vehicle in a ditch, vehicles in a, in a field, waiting time, labor, and dealing with related matters.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioner, I'm here tonight for the record rotation list. The labor will be changed from one-fifty to two-fifty. It will contain one-fifty, depends on the work they'll be doing. On the rollover, somehow or another, they're not getting, they're doing more labor, and they're not getting their costs from the, uh, insurance companies, and they kind of, uh, say, no, we're not gonna pay you, we're gonna follow the ordinance. So if they work four or five hours out in the field, or turnover, or they're in a ditch, they still charge one-fifty. So they would like to bring up to two-fifty, which is mostly state standard. It cannot max out at two-fifty, just labor only. I recommend approval on this matter. Any questions?
This is public hearing, anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Robert Robertson, appearing here on behalf of all the tow operators, licensed tow operators here in Brownsville. We support this proposed ordinance, uh, we just wanted to add a postscript that, really, we think that, uh, because we're so highly regulated, and we're law-abiding citizens, and we, we're, we're public servants, our job is to make the place safe and secure for, for all motorists. We think that we should be self-regulated in conjunction, in tandem with the commission, come up with rules that apply to each specific instance and each specific, uh, possibility. Debris is a, is a case in point. Our job should be to clean a place up as quickly as possible. The way the rules are, are structured as passed by, by the commission, we're better off having one person out there for ten hours, rather than getting ten people there in one hour and getting the place cleaned up so that other operators are not put at risk. We just suggest and propose for future discussion that we be able to, um, create a commission with the city, so that we can address these specific instances, but we are here in support of this ordinance, thank you.
It's good to hear we have a lot of law-abiding citizens.
Thank you, Bill. Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of closing public hearing?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed, motion carries.
Thank you. Would approve, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item nine, public comment period. He just arrived, I think.
What's that?
I think he's here, they're gonna check in the hallway.
Okay, we'll be happy to wait.
Item ten, consideration in action on resolution number twenty eleven dash zero twenty-two, to approve a resolution of the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation with respect to the issuance of up to nine million dollars in principal amount of sales tax revenue refunding bonds, series twenty twelve, to refund a portion of the corporation's outstanding sales tax revenue bonds.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city commission, this similar resolution was passed by the B C I C board last Thursday, and what this resolution says is that we want to, uh, refund the, uh, a portion, the two thousand and four series, uh, that, that the B C I C has. We are right now at one of the all-time interest rate that are very low, that it is, it is, uh, a big savings, we can start refunding some of these old bonds, and this is the two thousand and zero four series. I will jump on this PowerPoint as, as I can here. This is a calendar of events, uh, regarding the refunded of some of these bonds. Uh, on February the sixteenth, last Thursday, the B C I C adopted the, their resolution to refinance, but the city commission needs to stamp the approval, so that's what we're doing tonight, the twenty-first of February. And we moved down the, down, down that schedule, of importance would be the March twenty-sixth, that's when we have conference calls with the rating agencies, and by the way, the rating agencies, uh, the same rating that the city has, also the B C I C has on their sales tax revenue bonds, uh, they, uh, right now, the, the, the rating for, for B C I C is a double, double A minus with Fitch, and a double, double A three with Booty's, and A plus with Standard and Coors. And, and as we move down the line, on April the eleventh, that's when we price the bonds, or we sell the bonds, and then we, we have the closing on, on the May tenth. Moving back to the schedule, assuming that, that if we were to have sold the bonds last Thursday, or refund some of these bonds, we could have had a savings of four hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, or a percentage savings of four point five percent. Now, the interest rates are move up and down every, every week, every day. The time now is to start the process of refunding some of these bonds, so that we can realize a savings as we go forth. Now, if, when we realize the savings, that means that the, that the revenue fund from the B C I C will have extra monies to spend, because that means that the debt service fund will not get as much money as that they were getting. Like, in this, in this case, let's say, two twelve, twenty twelve, that was seventy-two thousand dollar potential savings. And each of those years, all the way down to twenty twenty-four, uh, that's where the four hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ten comes in. We made a recommendation to the B C I C that we should move forward, uh, with this refunding, and we're asking the city commission to, to stamp the approval of this also resolution.
Would approve, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eleven, consideration in action to acknowledge the delinquent ad valorem tax collections report presented by representatives of Leinbarger, Gogan, Blair, Sampson, L L P.
Mr. John Gavada will make the presentation here, just please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, members of the staff, city staff, it's a pleasure to be before you. Uh, it's, uh, I'm pleased to, uh, announce that, uh, present this, uh, presentation and report to you that collections are, are at an all-time high, uh, we ended last year also at an all-time high. In the first four months of this year, we're proceeding nicely, and, and I'll show you what I'm talking about. Uh, let's see. Uh, I believe you have our delinquent tax collection report on your screen, and I'm gonna try to figure out how to do this. But, uh, this, this collection report, uh, covers a time period, uh, from your fiscal year moving forward, so the first four months of your current fiscal year. Our litigation effort, our pre-litigation effort always involves taxpayer visits and mailings. And if you look on your second page of your report, you can see the mailing schedule that we- that we have. How can? How to scroll down here? There it is. Okay, you see the mailing schedule. The first mailing went out in November. We also had one in December. We had one this month, and we'll continue this aggressive mailing program throughout the rest of the year. What you see, what you don't see is we don't have a mailing in October or January because we don't want our delinquent tax mailing to interfere with your current tax mailing. Your current tax bills usually go out in October, or they always go out in October, and then again in January. And so we want to make sure that your current taxes get paid, and so we don't want our delinquent tax mailing to interfere with that. Also, property visits are another big portion of our pre-litigation effort. We want to go out and visit with the taxpayer to see if we can enter into a payment agreements and try to get them to come and visit us as well. In addition to that mailing program and the property inspection program, we have a call center staff that makes outgoing calls and receives incoming calls to try to work with those taxpayers who can't make it into our office. A litigation summary is at the bottom of page two, and this is what the litigation summary includes. Again, for the first four months, we've taken thirty-six judgments totaling about eighty-six thousand dollars. We've had non-suits that have been paid totaling sixty-three cases, a little over a hundred and thirteen thousand. We filed a little over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that is owed to the city in lawsuits. It's a hundred and twenty-two suits. Currently pending in the court system, we have six hundred and seventy-four cases totaling just over one point three million dollars. The next page shows collections, October through January, for the last four years. As you can see, you see consistent increased collections each year. We're at about seventy thousand, sixty-five thousand dollars more than last year, and the percentage is a percentage of what the city is owed, and we call it the D T R, the delinquent tax roll. So roughly about four years ago, you were owed five million dollars. That has slowly increased to five point three, three years ago, and has stayed pretty consistent the last two years, five point five and five point six. That D T R grows because you have current tax, current taxes are not being paid and go delinquent. So I really, we can't determine what that'll be from year to year because that's, those are accounts that have just gone delinquent and are added back into the pot. On the bottom of that page, you'll see the same collections. The green bars are the same as the chart previous. What you do see is the orange, and that orange represents the penalty and interest that has been collected on top of the base. So total collections, we're at about almost a million dollars, and that's about seventy thousand dollars higher than last year at this same time. Tax sales are a big portion of collections. Those cases that we cannot resolve and we take judgments on, we will take the tax sale. We've had four property tax sales involving city property that we will have this year. Our next one is going to be in March, and we currently have one planned for June and August, and then another one in September, and those are the four that we'll have. This past November, we conducted a resale where we put up fifteen properties for sale, and thirteen of those properties sold, and then we received private offers on two additional ones, so all fifteen properties were put back on the tax roll. As far as a work plan that we have, we're gonna be pretty consistent with what we did last year. Let's see. Can't read what that is, and I apologize. I'm still trying to figure out how to learn how to do this. There we go. Are you doing that? Let's see. We currently have thirty-one accounts that we're looking at that owe about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars that we're getting ready to file on. We're gonna increase taxpayer visitations. We've targeted forty-seven personal visits to do in the next quarter. The six hundred and seventy-four pending suits, we want to take and move aggressively towards judgment and get those back on the roll. We are also monitoring taxpayer agreements, totaling nine hundred and eight agreements that owe the city a little over half a million dollars. Bankruptcy is important. A lot of folks think that bankruptcy, filing for bankruptcy will get rid of the taxes owed, but that's not true. What it does is it tolls bankruptcy, and so we represent you at bankruptcy court, wherever that court would be, because not all bankruptcies are filed here in Brownsville. They can be filed anywhere in the country, and we represent you anywhere that happens. Currently, we're monitoring four hundred and twenty-one accounts in bankruptcy totaling a little over three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That is our report in a nutshell. At the very end of the report, you see the numbers from last year, how we ended the year. So you could turn to exhibit A, and you'll see the collections there. With penalty and interest, you did better than you've done in history. You collected two point five million dollars compared to two point four last year. That's with base penalty and interest. And you also will see a litigation summary on the last page, as well as tax sale information for the year on that last page. With that, that's our report in a nutshell. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
I'd move to approve and acknowledge.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Item twelve, consideration and action to authorize Mr. Charlie Cabler, City Manager, to enter into a memorandum of agreement for mutual aid of emergency medical services for public assistance to provide mutual aid in a pending or actual disaster with the state of Texas Department of State Health Services.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, this is a mutual aid agreement for disasters across Texas between the city of Brownsville and Texas State Health, State, Department of State Health Services. In case they called us out and need assistance, then we'll be authorized to go out there and be reimbursed according to the rates you see before you in the contract. This to authorize Mr. Cabler to sign this agreement. There is a possibility that we may be getting funding if we sign this in regards to getting equipment also donated to the city of Brownsville to help us do this endeavors.
Would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, consideration and action on resolution number twenty twelve dash zero twenty-three to authorize a submittal of funding applications to the Lowell Rio Grande Valley Development Council for fiscal year twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, regional solid waste grants that support the efforts of source reduction, recycling projects, educational and training projects.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, essentially, this is just an authorization from the commission to allow us to pursue some grant opportunities.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, consideration and action to approve the leasing of a real property located at twelve fifty-four East Monroe to Rio Bravo Wildlife Institute.
Honorable mayor, city commissioners, last City Commission meeting, we brought the policy for leasing some of our facilities to nonprofits. Tonight, we bring you the lease agreement for Rio Bravo. In this agreement, the term is for fifteen years, of which three years, they would pay two hundred dollars a month, and then the remaining years, they will be at four hundred dollars. As you may know, the Monroe house is dilapidated. It's historical. Their responsibility is to put it back into use at their own expense, and that's why the rent is low at this time. So a approximate cost would be between thirty and fifty thousand dollars to bring that facility up, which they will fundraise.
Will they be paying for their, for their P V bill on the letter?
No, sir. They will be paying for insurance, utilities and maintenance of that facility.
They'll take care of it?
Yes.
And Ben, do they have a timeframe as to when they need to bring the home up to par?
After this agreement, there will be a separate agreement that we'll bring to you for the renovation of that facility because we want to make sure that they comply with all of our design guidelines and historical ways of putting the building together. I mean, it has to be restored the way it used to be. So that will be a separate agreement. Tonight is the lease. That we, we, no use forming that agreement if we're not gonna entertain a lease with them.
But I'm saying, I think what the question was, how long do they have? I'm sorry.
The term is for fifteen years, but to fix it up, they have-
But did they have fifteen years to fix it up?
No, 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 sir. The term of the lease. To answer your question, Ms. Samora, they need to do it within a year's time because once they get that permit, they have a year to complete that renovation.
And are we able to revisit the contract in the event they don't meet the requirements within that year?
Yes, there's outs in the contract.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So you're gonna be, you're gonna be bringing up a separate contract so that we can make sure that we, that they hold up their end of the bargain as far as the remodeling?
That's correct, yes, for the funding. That would be, this is a lease, but we do want a separate contract for how they're gonna spend the money on our facility, and that they agree to all the historical aspects and construction ways of doing, restoring the building. Even though this building is very simple and modest, some of the architectural way it was done is very unique, and we want that to be in place. Some of the wood siding needs to be identical to what is existing and what can be salvaged inside. There's like, for example, at that time, they used sheetrock. They used planking. So all of that, we need to be put in place and to replicate, to find it or to manufacture it. So we want all of that to be in place. We have commissioned an architect-
I know, but there's nothing in here that's gonna safeguard us to say that they're gonna carry that because that's gonna be-
Yeah. I think, Commissioner, what happens is, you know, you gotta make sure, Ben, that and Estella, whatever the, whatever he's telling us here that is reduced to writing, and legal department's gotta make sure, we're gonna do it subject to the approval of the legal, of the legal department in conformity with whatever is being passed right here, I think.
Right, and the agreement was reviewed by our legal team, but tonight, what's before you is the term and the lease amount. If we do not entertain that term or lease or with them, then there's no use following the other thing.
Well, I just wanna make sure that it ties in because this is what's enforceable right now, and you have nothing to tie it into them, their obligation to fix up and repair and to remodel according to-
And maybe for future reference, Ben, is that we have the form of the lease presented to us at the time of the meeting so that we can take a look at it. But I see no reason, well, I mean, it's up to y'all, guys. I see no reason to table it, but you can do it subject to the approval of, you know, or maybe you wanna table it, I don't know. We've tabled this one before. This is a good, we all know it's a good organization. We know we wanna do this. We know, but the thing is, Ben, I think it would be help, all of us assure ourselves, if you would bring us the proposed lease, that's-
The proposed lease is in the package?
Okay, but is, does that, I haven't looked at it, to be honest with you. But is it, does it set out all those terms?
The, in sections-
Whatever I saw, I thought it was a different one than-
There's another lease coming up. But there's, in Article Five, repairs, maintenance and restoration, I'm sorry, I didn't have the page number, per Article Five, the tenant's duty to maintain and repair. So there's a section there. But what I wanna come back is with the funding, how-
And the funding issue can be separate, but what I wanna make sure is that in here, we have, we have the correct wording where we're protected, that they're gonna be following whatever specs you're gonna provide to them. Because it leaves it up in the air, and I don't want them to come back in, because this is what we have before us, and this doesn't say anything that they're obligated to repair according to the specs that you're talking about.
And additionally, if the building is dilapidated and they're making renovations, is it safe for occupancy?
Right now, no, but the, that's, that's the goal. They have to get that certificate of occupancy, and that's what we want. I mean, that, that's what will make them move in or allow them to move into this facility.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the commission? Do I hear a motion?
And the mayor said, I think I would go with, with how you're proposing, that we put it, we pass it according to, subject to that wording put in there.
Okay. Well, we'll entertain any motion that abides by, it's gotta be consideration and action to approve a leasing of real property located at twelve fifty-four East Monroe to the Rio Bravo Wildlife Institute, which I think the motion would be to the effect that we approve it, subject to whatever council or commissioner, whatever you wanna say.
That's correct. We can put legal on section five, address-
I understand you want it to be section five in terms of repairs, maintenance, restoration. You want a provision ensuring that the tenant, when they're pursuant to their obligation to conduct maintenance, repair, comply with any standards that the city may set and require of them. Is that correct?
Within a year. Within a year you set?
Yes. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll get through this, Ben.
Thank you very much.
It's a learning process, but it's getting better. It's getting better.
And there was no, there was no policy, and there were no agreements, so we're learning.
No, no, we'll get through this. I mean, I said, just, we'll have a little tweaking to do here, that's all. Okay, number fifteen?
Item fifteen, consideration and action to approve a leasing of real property located at thirteen oh one East Madison Street to United Brownsville.
Honorable mayor and city commissioners, and this particular lease is basically, this is for the Lucina House, a structure cottage in the Cueto complex of one thousand four hundred and twenty-one square feet. But we hope that the commission approve as a lease to United Brownsville, and here, the term is up to the commission how long, but the, the rent would be a thousand dollars per month to, as soon as you approve the agreement, that we will start this, this rent.
Okay, now, I think the question that the commission should have is, how big is this house?
One thousand four hundred and twenty-one square feet.
So you're trying to lease the entire house?
Yes.
There was, you know, no leftover for us?
Well, and that's what I do not know, Mayor, and the, and that's what I left the term and beginning date blank, because it could be, we can lease the whole cottage or we can lease part of the cottage. That's, that's my question, but-
You know, I don't know that the commission, let me just put it to you this way. Mike, who's here, Gonzalez, who is the executive director of United Brownsville, had asked if, they were with the Brownsville Economic Development Corporation, those guys have expanded over there at I-Tech, and so he was looking for space. And I thought it would be nice that we could get some of our money back that we have to pay into, to United Brownsville. But I think the idea was that we would be allowed some space, and I think Commissioner Samora and Commissioner Yarriaga, when I took him over to there, and that's what I was calling about, to see if anybody wanted to go visit, the idea was, Mike, I think we wanted, we needed a little space, and that's what I was trying to get at, because it would be nice to have this commission, to have a place where we can call an office. And that was the idea, right? Right, Ben?
Yes, and then we had also discussed individually, and a couple of us have had some discussion, that we all have different ideas and projects that we envision for that building. And I think the best avenue to take for all of us is to have a workshop. That way, we can all present our ideas on what we want to see at the Cueto building, what kind of departments we'd like to see there, you know, just give everyone an opportunity to put all of their ideas on the table, and who knows, maybe someone else might have or envision something better for that building, or maybe there's a partnership that Imagine Brownsville might have with someone else where it would be of most benefit to the city.
Yeah, no, I think the whole idea was, he's out of a place, he's been looking for a place. We were trying to figure out whether we could accommodate this organization, and by the same token, I think with your department was trying to get, you know, like twelve thousand dollars to be paid upfront, because I think their budget already has it. And that was gonna help us fund to get maybe some stuff that we needed for the, for the house. But I mean, but I don't think the intent was to give up the whole house.
Okay. The rent is pretty comparable and to market rents in downtown. We, the rate of a thousand dollars is comparable. If you wanna subtract four hundred and twenty-one square foot, of which will allow two office spaces out of that, and the remainder of a thousand feet, square feet to United Brownsville, they do only have two employees.
Ben, the city oversees United Brownsville, but the different entities contribute to it. it. Now, in the process of finding United Brownsville, its director and his staff a home, have the other entities been notified that United Brownsville director and staff will be paying rent to the city of Brownsville?
We're talking about the other entities that fund United Brownsville.
Correct.
I guess that's a question for, for the director, Mr. Gonzalez.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez, have the other entities been notified as to the intent of rent being paid out of the, out of the money that they contribute? Please take, take the mic.
Mike Gonzalez, Executive Director, United Brownsville. Yes, the other entities have been aware that we do plan to, to pay rent. It was part of our annual budget that the, that the United Brownsville Board approved at the beginning of our fiscal year. We really found some, you know, we had a few other opportunities as far as, as leasing. This really seemed like a good fit, especially with the vision that, that the, that the commission is moving forward on as far as using this as a center to bring ideas together. We've already hosted a few task force meetings there from members of the community. So it is a, it's a good ideal spot, and, you know, I, I think long-term, it, it'll be a good fit for both United Brownsville and the city.
Mr. Gonzalez, who size of your staff?
It's just myself and one support person.
I'm sorry?
One support person and myself.
Okay. And for two people, were you planning, I mean, obviously, the use of the building, parking spaces thus being available. When Mr. Kabbler approached you about housing you at City Plaza, was there a problem with that? Because we do have, since, since Techstar did move out of City Plaza, we do have office space available over there, and probably we could get you an even better price. My take on it is because, as a voluntary member of this entity, we contribute to the money that's being used for United Brownsville.
Right.
Now, indulge me if you will, and this is just my perspective on it, and my opinion, my personal opinion on it. United Brownsville was formed after we took a trip to Washington DC, and congressmen requested that we have a plan. The plan has been created. Thus, your job is to continue with implementation through the different boards. But a thousand dollars a month in rent, even though it will be coming back to the city, and we are contributing, what I do not want is friction or questions to be coming up with the other entities, and for this plan or for this concept to be dissolved. I've been here, and two plans have been dissolved while I've been in office, because entities don't agree. And that's, that was the reason for my question as to whether the entities had been approached and knew that you were seeking. Mr. Kabbler had told us that, you know, there was space available at City Plaza that could possibly house you and your, your, your administrative assistant, probably in keeping you within us, and where we could help you a little bit better instead of twelve thousand dollars a year.
Right, the, we did look at the location at, at City Plaza that, that Techstar had vacated. The only issue on that was it, it was a fairly large space and a lot more than we actually needed. It had several individual offices and, and one big common area. But the other thing is, we have regular, you know, we have ten initiatives that we're moving forward. We have over a hundred citizens volunteering their, their time and their expertise to move forward on this. So we're really looking for an ideal spot that, that would be convenient for them to, to convene, that had accessible parking, and that had access to, to open conference space.
Does it have adequate parking?
Yeah, I believe so. We have that, there is parking located just, just across from the street on there, and there is, you know, you, even on-street parking's pretty available in that area. But the, the, the bigger thing is, it's kinda creating a, a center to where people kinda get used to, you know, that's where we meet, and, and that's where the ideas get exchanged. So as far as the under, the other United Brownsville entities being notified, we had a, a pretty good, lengthy discussion during our last board meeting. Alternatives were reviewed. This was, this amount of a thousand per month was slotted in, in the budget. If, if, if you all, in, in your, in your grand wisdom decide to cut that rate, we'll, we'll be more than happy to, to oblige that also. Or cut the square footage. But yeah, I, I believe the, the facility itself facilitates ease of access for, for people who are volunteering their time. And that, and that's really what this is about, again, over a hundred citizens volunteering their time. We really wanna make it as easy as possible for them to meet. And it's, you know, we're tackling issues from, from wellness, civic engagement, environment. So again, you know, we, we really think this is an ideal location.
I don't wanna deviate from what's on the agenda. Do you have a proposed, we have not had a report from United Brownsville. Do you have in your immediate future a proposed presentation for the city commission?
Yeah, in fact, we did send out invitations. We've kinda changed the structure a little bit of the United Brownsville meetings. We have monthly meetings. But the idea is to have one, you know, every month we have a board meeting, but to follow that up with a public presentation that shows how we're making progress on the plan. So for example, last month, we had the Brownsville Public Utility Board. They did a presentation on, on their Resaca Restoration Program. And those, we just send invites to not just the United Brownsville Board, but to all the, to all the boards of all our entities, and as well as all the task forces. So that, that's an open invitation. We're gonna do that every month so that we can have some real good dialogue. And the key on that one was pretty simple, is even though the Resaca Restoration Program is a PUB project, it's something that impacts everybody, and it's something that, that, that other entities can add projects to, to really, to really bring benefit to, to citizens. So that's, that's the type of exchange we need to be having at, at, at that level. We're more than happy to come back to the city commission to, to have a specific presentation. You know, we're, we have plenty of information to communicate. It's happened to me, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. I mean, there, the, the meetings that the United Brownsville has is open to the public, whoever would like to attend, they're more than welcome to, and they can kinda keep themselves abreast of what everybody else is doing. Okay? Thanks.
And there is a meeting coming up, Commissioner, where staff, planning department staff, will be presenting at United Brownsville, the efforts of a UDC, Unified Development Code, and that will be at the Quito. And that's important to us. So I, I think the, the question about friction with other entities, I think with this presentation, we'll bring everybody together, because it's something that you, as a commission, will have to take the lead, because you are the ones that approve development in the city. Through zoning or subdivision matters, you are the ultimate body here. So, so with that, I ask you that, that please allow us to pursue this, this lease agreement when we're in Brownsville, because it will be a focal point, a focal, a building where we can bring all these entities together. We can bring to this Unified Development Code, which everybody will participate, from a developer or from a private owner, all, and it comes, and it will come all the way to you through the development, because you are the approving body.
Parking around the building, Ben, does it belong to the city or is it privately?
Um, it's privately owned. But our efforts are to pursue and acquiring as much parking as possible. We do have some proposed lease agreements with adjacent property owners that do not wanna sell, but they want a lease, and that's fine. With, with, with the lease purchase option to, one day, we can obtain that property and pursue other two more. And, and everybody's, I think people are just waiting to see what happens with this facility, and once they know, and people go visit, and, and more people start using our building, I think it'll be a win-win for everybody. So with this, tonight, I ask you to please allow us to pursue this agreement. If we need to reduce the, the, I apologize to Mayor, because I know that, that he did, you know, he did tell me that, you know, commissioner, commissioner office spaces, which I think is ideal, but also Mr. Gonzalez and his staff needs a, a place to be. And I think this is a place, United Brownsville, that then we need to bring everybody to this building. It's a beautiful facility. And, and we had a meeting there yesterday, but, but everybody's in agreement. And, and once you see, I guess tomorrow, there's a party there, but you'll see it in action tomorrow.
Ben, what attracted me to when initially Mr. Gonzalez had been offered space at City Plaza, was that we have a conference room on the second floor at City Plaza that is in need of use. And we do have office space, and offices there could be accommodated to the space fitting a proper director's office.
You know, with, with all due respect, Commissioner, you know, we're not talking about City Plaza, we're talking about a lease over here on, on Madison Avenue.
Correct, Mayor. But there have been options. There have been options as to the use of the facility.
Mr. Commissioner, we're not talking about options, we're talking about this lease. Now, we either pass it or we don't. And I realize what you're trying to do, but it's not gonna work. Thank you very much. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion denied.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve. I, I would like to amend her motion. I think a good compromise is a one-year lease with a thirty-day termination upon either party.
Sounds good to me.
And to, and do you wanna reduce the space too? Because I agree, that's a lot of space.
Well, I, I think that if we, if we can agree to negotiate the lease, and I say no longer than a year, to figure that, first of all, and second of all, to allow us with the ability to go check out what, how much space can be worked out, I'm sure Mike could, I, I don't, this is not a bone of contention. This is not something, in other words, this, this community needs to be united, and it's something that we're all trying to achieve, with perhaps the exception of some people on the commission. But it's not something that is supposed to be dividing. So we will, we will do that and negotiate the space, and we can bring that back to, to y'all.
Yes, and then my bargaining chip is that you come back more regularly and provide updates to us, as this commission deserves, because we are a partner in United Brownsville, and we deserve to know what's going on without having to attend every meeting.
Okay. That sounds fair.
Mayor, there's independent, there's two independent doors that we have addressed.
There's two entry points, and the building can easily be divided in two.
Sure.
We, we, we- I, myself, thought we were leasing half the building as well, so.
I know. We can work that out if, if everybody is in agreement with the general proposition that we do lease at least a portion of that property for one year to United Brownsville. Is that, is that okay for your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we hear a second?
For the same fee.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Um, just one point. I, I know the time, I, more than anyone, know calendars are difficult, but one thing that I like about going to the presentations there is that the other entities are present, so if I have a question, I can ask them, as opposed to them coming here and the other entities are not here. I understand your point about coming here, but it is very valuable to go there, because all those people are there in one place at one time, and you can discuss with them.
Yeah, but, but besides that, I think, Mike, most of those presentations have written forms, so if, you know, there's, there's nothing wrong with disseminating all that, and if there's any questions, we'll be happy to try to, you know, visit.
I agree. And the public also has a right to know what updates there are with United Brownsville.
No question about that. Item number sixteen?
Item number sixteen, consideration in action on Resolution Number 2012 dash zero twenty-one to acknowledge the need for redevelopment, declaring blight, and supporting the administration of the facade improvement grant program.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, through this resolution, a requirement for our funding, which is CDPG, that for this facade improvement program, is that we identify the, the central business district as, as needing, as, as being blighted, but also we're attaching the Buena Vida in case we seek other funding for that neighborhood. And with this resolution, we would begin our program for facade improvement in downtown. On your desk is the application, and we're sure that everybody in downtown will get. We would, we would have as much as possible, make sure that every property owner in downtown or business owner has the opportunity to apply for this funding. It's a matched grant, up to ten thousand dollars, and they will get that after the completion of their facade improvement. After we acknowledge their improvement, we, we review their invoices, we review their bidding procedure, they would have to comply with Davis Bacon, a federal requirement of their employees, that they have to pay an appropriate federal wage. So this is what we're presenting here tonight, through this resolution, which is required for our funding. If you approve this tonight, we will start marketing our program for facade improvements in downtown. So we ask for your support.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item seventeen, consideration in action to authorize and approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Brownsville Police Department and the Brownsville Navigation District Police Department for the use of the eight hundred megahertz trunked radio system.
Good evening, honorable mayor and commissioners. The request before you this evening is to authorize an interlocal agreement between the Brownsville Police Department and the Port of Brownsville Police Department for access to our communication system. In essence, what this would be doing would creating a, a talk group for the, the port police to communicate with each other, and also access to our, our, our inquiry channel for, for their needs as needed. This is modeled after the current programs that we have in place with Brownsville School District and the University of, of Texas Police. And we are, we are, we recommend that you approve this.
That would be good.
Motion approved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, consideration in action to award a term contract to multiple contractors for demolition services for the city of Brownsville.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, at the request of various city departments of purchasing and contracting services department, solicited formal bids for a multiple contract for demolition services for the city of Brownsville for condemned and dilapidated, dilapidated structures. This contract should be awarded for a primary contractor, a secondary contractor, and a tertiary contractor. Levels should be determined on a, on a unit price, unit cost basis, and will be with the lowest unit cost awarded per line item. Awarded contractors can participate only at one level. Should the Level One or the primary contract, contractor be unable to provide the requested work, then the, the, the secondary contractor will be called. And if the secondary contractor cannot provide that service, then we go to the tertiary. Now, the project milestones is the legal advertisement appeared in the Brownsville Herald two times, one, September the fourth and September the eleventh. Acknowledgements were subsequently received confirming participation by several contractors. A previous meeting was conducted on Thursday, September thirteenth, twenty-eleven. Seal formal bids were opened for the subject project on October the seventh, two thousand eleven, and a total of five bids were received and tabulated by the purchasing department. Staff recommendation is to award a contract to multiple contractors for demolition services for condemned and dilapidated structures. And we have RLC Consulting Group of Brownsville, Texas. We have Rudy Martinez Holling of Brownsville, Texas, Directive Concrete Design of Brownsville, Texas, US Hair Industries of Brownsville, Texas, and Valley American Contractors of Brownsville, Texas. This contract shall commence upon city commission approval and shall expire February the twenty-eighth of the year twenty thirteen, and the city reserves the right to extend the contract for two additional one-year periods. Funding for this project is available through each department operating budget. I'll be more than happy to, to answer any questions at this point.
Ready for my questions?
I'll try to.
Of course. Let's go.
Well, the only reason this item interested me was because one of the companies who will be on the rotation is called Valley American Contractors, owned by Mr. Escobedo, who also owns American Surveillance. So I was wondering what kind of experience all of these approved companies had, and which is why I requested references from you. I didn't receive them. So I did call all of these vendors, all ten of them on this list, to see if, in fact, they had been contacted, and if, in fact, they did receive or give an acknowledgement on the bid documentation. And out of all of them, I have one, two, three, four, five, who told me that they had not been contacted.
Five of the contractors on the vendor's list?
On this list, yes.
Okay, what we do is, we send out, we send out a fax, we also publish the, the, the package on the newspaper, and we have, as part of the bid package, an acknowledgement of receipt. Sometimes we don't get acknowledgements of receipt, sometimes we get acknowledgements from vendors saying, yes, we will participate, or no, we will not participate, and sometimes they, they let us know the reason why, maybe because they're bonding, they're, it's, they have it with another contract sometimes, because they're not interested. But sometimes they, they just don't, don't, don't send us those acknowledgements. But sometimes, they just don't send us those acknowledgements. Most of the time.
Robert, do you have any way of verifying within your file that... I mean, in other words, if I'm sending out a bid or I'm sending out a piece of information, at least from my law office, if I want to make sure that someone has received it or I have sent it, I'd send it registered mail or some sort of way of verification. Do you have that in your file?
We do. What we do, Mayor, is we send the copy of the advertisement, the one that we send out to the newspaper, and we send it via fax. Together with the fax, we have the acknowledgement that it recreates when we send it out through our system, through the copier that we have, which is multifunctional. And also, what we have is we post the packages online through the city website. So, when vendors download the package, their responsibility is also to return the acknowledgement of receipt. So, like that, we know who's participating. Not necessarily the contractors that you see on this vendor's list have access to the information. That information is available to everybody because it's online.
No, I...
But to answer your question, sometimes, it is hard to receive acknowledgements from vendors. Sometimes, it is verbally when they go to the office. We tell them also verbally, and they say, yeah, we will participate. Sometimes, they go... They come to the preview meeting. Sometimes, they don't. Sometimes, we even have vendors that didn't attend the meetings to submit a bid package.
Okay, but just if I could, Robert. If I were to go back through your file, though, what you're trying to tell me is that you can show me the paper and the dates on which it was published? That's one thing.
Yes, sir.
You can show me that you can go back to the website, and you can prove to me that it's been on the website for certain days, whatever? And then, on certain occasions, you can tell me that you faxed it to some folks who had a fax machine that you had access to, and those you can prove? Okay? Is that the extent of the way you're going to be able to prove that you had public notice?
That's correct. That's correct.
So, I have a... Are you done with your questions? Well, because it just says nine acknowledgements were subsequently received, confirming receipt of bid documentation. And then, you had just said that you don't receive them from everybody, so...
Let me go back to this. I know there's a mistake on number 2 where it says eight contractors were represented at the preview meeting. Actually, there were five. Five that attended the preview meeting because that's what I have on the signing sheet. So, that's the mistake that I have on the analysis on number 2. But going back to the acknowledgements of vendors, I know that two of these companies listed, we received the acknowledgement, not the acknowledgement, but the copy back where it says that they're no longer in business. The numbers that they have didn't answer sometimes. And what happens sometimes, the issue that I have, sometimes vendors, when they change numbers, most of the time, they go to the office or they go online, and they change their information. Sometimes, they don't. So, it's... What I told the vendors at the preview meeting is that it is their responsibility to look on the website and download the addendums and make sure that they look into the website every week to find out what projects are available for them to participate with.
I have a question.
Yes.
You... Are the vendors, out of the 10 vendors, is there a list that you have that you normally use those vendors?
It's a list that is created on vendors that have participated on previous demolitions.
And you normally just send the notices to them? Or what's the... I guess what I'm asking is, what is the procedure? And is there something that...
The procedure on their local government code, it says that if we need to at least... We need to polish the ad on the newspaper twice. That's the first thing. Number 2, we need to acknowledge vendors of the bid. In this case, we do have a website where we post the bid, and it's available to anybody. I mean, if you have access to the internet, you can access the information. You can download it. You can attend the preview meeting. So, that's how we have communications with vendors. And in most of the cases, the vendors that participated on this particular bid are vendors that are continuously visiting the department, saying what's available. We need to work...
Okay, and out of those vendors, are the ones that are on the list, are they pre-qualified?
Well, most of the vendors that you see in here have done business with the city, have done construction work.
No, I'm asking on your vendor list.
Oh.
Those that are on the vendor list, are they pre-qualified?
Yes, most of them are pre-qualified. There's some that are new, that never done business with the city. When that happens, what we do is we call sometimes the county or the school district if they have done previous work for them, and that's how we qualify them.
So, you ask... You actively ask for references regarding jobs that they've done with other entities. But is there, in your procedures, is there a mechanism in there whereby you pre-qualify? Is that... Are we obligated? That's what I'm asking. Are we obligated to pre-qualify the vendors?
We're not necessarily... It's not necessarily, in most of the cases, to go through that. It all depends on the scope of work that is going to be done.
Okay, for this scope of work?
Mm-hmm.
Because I was noticing that it's different levels.
Yes.
And obviously, if one is not qualified to do the lower level of work, and then you have the medium level and then the higher...
But that was based on the cost, on price.
Right. But if they're not qualified, how do you know if they're qualified? That's what I'm asking.
Okay. The process is, when we enter into a contract, let's say... Let me give you an example. We have a new contractor that is new, that never done any demolition. The first thing they need to comply with, they need to have insurance. They need to have workers' compensation, general liability. They need to have the proper equipment. In other words, they cannot just go with a hammer and knock the house down. They need to have the proper equipment. That's one way of qualifying them.
And the reason I'm asking for the pre-qualification... I'm sorry. Because, obviously, some of these contractors are not capable of doing all the jobs. And so, my concern is, if we're going to put them on there, we need to be able to pre-qualify them so that we can at least be assured that they have the tools.
Yes.
The insurance coverage that's needed and everything else. And so, I think that's the important part of the pre-qualifying process. And I'm not sure that you're doing it here.
Well, like I mentioned it, in the past, we have done business with most of these people. And what we do is, we check on their work. Like, the previous one, I can tell you, is US Hair Industries of Brownsville, Texas. They did the previous demolition, and we had people from the Health Department and also people from the Building Inspections Department checking on them, checking to make sure they have the proper equipment, that they were following everything by the book. And what happens is, if we see something that is wrong, we stop everything.
Okay, and out of the contractors that you have on there, I was noticing that there was only one of them that was on the... Only one of them, which is Rudy Martinez, is the only one that is on your vendor list.
Yeah.
And so, that, to me, is a little unsettling because you don't have prior work done with the other two contractors, the other three contractors, per se, in this particular area. They might be working with the city in other... In another shape or form, right? But my concern is that we're not pre-qualifying them to safeguard the city.
Well, in this case, since it... Like I mentioned it, since it is demolition, it's not as bad as doing construction, where in construction, we really need to qualify them. In demolition, it's... They're going to be demolishing homes as long as they comply with insurance. And they also follow the Davis Bacon wage rates because if you notice on the tab sheet, you will find two different pricing. If... If you can put the tab sheet on the screen so I can explain that. There's different pricing because when we get federal funds to pay for some of these demolition services, there's different pricing that we're going to be using. When it's... When we pay out of the general fund, which is required for contractors to pay the minimum wage of 8.50 an hour. That was as per resolution back in 2008. Now, we use CDBG funding, and the requirement is to follow Davis Bacon wage rates. We need to submit those 10 days prior to giving the notice to proceed. Therefore, they need to follow those rates. Not necessarily, they have to be the 8.50, but it's...
I'm not arguing, and I'm not... My question doesn't go to the rates or what they're charging. My question is qualifying your vendors. That's my question. Are we doing this with these vendors? And if we're not doing that, why are we bypassing that step?
Okay.
They're qualified based on... They're an established business. They have a business address.
They have permits for their business to operate, whether it's in the city of Brownsville or another city.
They're bonded.
And then, they must be able to produce a bond, insurance, if they're going to do any type of work for the city of this nature or any other nature. Once that's done, then they... And they're qualified to do this work. A lot of the advantages we have is they've done this work for us in the past.
Well, that's okay. I'm saying that the reason I'm concerned is because I feel we're bypassing your qualification on these... On some of these vendors. And my question is, if you are doing that, where are we getting the authority to do that?
Well, some of these contractors...
Let me... I don't mean to put a stop to this. But I think that we need to get to the vote as to whether you're going to go forward with these particular contractors if you don't feel comfortable enough. Or... And again, I think what I'm seeing here, with all due respect to everybody in this room, is that there are some procedures that really need to be implemented, Robert. I mean, to be honest with you. We have some challenges and some room to be able to do things in a different way. And I think we all should stay open to that and try to get... And maybe have, you know, so the commissioner, some of you guys that have some questions, is address those issues. And let's figure out how we get a uniform way of doing business which gives everybody an equal shot that are qualified and that we know that the city is well taken care of.
Mayor, there was... Because of the comment, it's clear that it's a singling out of a contractor. But we need to look at the list. We need to look... When Robert's department goes out for qualifications, he's got to answer our city manager that answers to us. And there has to be some sort of a fine line in our interference in the process. Of course, you clearly know that when any contractor on this list is bonded, that's what's protecting the city.
I'm not disagreeing with you, Commissioner. What I'm saying to you is that it's the process, I think, that these commissioners are concerned with. And I'm not worried about singling out someone. That's something that's beyond the scope. What I'm saying to you is that there ought to be uniform procedures and processes that, yes, we can tell Mr. Kavler, this is what we think is a good practice. The best practice. I mean, you go to the TML seminars, they are always asking you for the best practice. So, I mean, that's... It's a real easy thing. But I think, right now, we're going to decide, you know, do I have a motion?
Can I just add something, just real quick? The fact that I was given this list, and this is what I was making my decision on, and like Commissioners Amora pointed out, that there were several that were disconnected, that makes me feel deceived. I just want to state that for the record. I feel deceived.
All right. Now, is there a motion on this item? That's all I want to...
I'm sorry, I just...
Huh?
I move the table until we get the references in the back of the...
Do I hear a second on that table?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just state for the record that politics is politics. The job that this director does, and his staff does, and our staff does, should not reflect these contracts and what the business that we need to get done to say.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you, Robert. For right now, it's tabled, and this is...
Okay, sir. I'll be more than happy to bring...
Yeah, we'll be happy to visit. This thing... Everything can work, okay?
Okay.
Next item.
To award a term contract to multiple contractors for purchase, hauling, and delivery of cover soil materials for the City of Brownsville.
It is intent of the City of Brownsville to establish a term contract for the purchase and hauling of cover soil materials for the Polyworks Department, Landfill Division, and any other city departments. This term contract will be derived from this. Solicitation shall be awarded for a total of four material suppliers. It's basically the same as the previous one, where we have a primary, a secondary, and a tertiary contractors to provide services. The project milestones are as follows. The legal advertisement appeared in the Brownsville Herald twice and was posted on the city website. A total of eight contractors and vendors on the list receive an invitation and a package. Acknowledgements were subsequently received. A preview meeting was conducted on January the 26, 2012, and seal formal bids were open for the subject project on February the 7, 2012. And a total of four bids were received and tabulated for City Commission. The recommendation is to award a term contract to multiple contractors for the purchase, hauling, and delivery of cover soil materials for the City of Brownsville to the following contractors: White Wind Ranch of Brownsville, Texas; Decorative Concrete of Brownsville, Texas; Rudy Martinez Hauling Services of Brownsville, Texas; and RML Hauling and Milling Incorporated of Brownsville, Texas. The quality of soils to be used for construction purposes with these materials will be surveyed by the city's contracted professional registered land surveyors that is under contract as well. And this contract shall commence upon award by City Commission and shall expire February 28, 2013. And the city reserves the right and option to extend the life of the contract for two additional one-year each for the same original prices. Funding for these services will be derived from Fund Number 01417779 and Fund Number 44415779 for the Landfill Division. Now, for any other special city projects, Now, for any other special city projects, it will be funded under the department's operating fund. The administration of the Public Works Department concurs with this recommendation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
I see we have the same contract, one of the same contractors here, the decorative concrete on this one as well.
Yes, in this case, in this case, most, most of these vendors have done these services for the city previously. I can tell you that Decorative Concrete Design, what, when I talk to them, like, like any of these other contractors on, on the list, sometimes, sometimes they subcontract the, the trucks, the hauling service. But you got to understand, this is for, for, this is for excavating, for, for haul, and for hauling services. And sometimes they go, they go to, to, we, we have, we have a contract at the landfill that it's always, it's a day-to-day, where they get these, these cover soil materials that they need to cover the, the trash every day. And they grab the, they get these materials from the, from the land that is right next to the landfill. But sometimes we have a need to bring materials from other sites, and bring it to the landfill, or we need to get materials to other places, like what we did with, with golf courses, what we did with the, at the sports park. So we, we have, most of these vendors already done this business for us, these services.
So all of these vendors, you're saying there's one, two, three, four, they've all done this type of service?
Yes, ma'am.
In, in the past?
And some of them, when they don't have enough staff, they subcontract from the other ones.
So these are pre-qualified?
Yes, ma'am. When, when, when I say that they're already, ready to do this, is because we have done business with them in the past.
These, you, you're saying that these are...
And they're bonded, and they have insurance, they need to have all the insurance, workers' compensation, everything.
So these are pre-qualified?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
All of this carry dirt, and take it for example to a landfill, which is a must for us.
The reason I'm asking is the pre-qualification process, and, and I'm a little, that's why I'm asking the question, is I want to make sure that we're doing the procedures, and we're implementing them across the board, uniformly across the board, to, to avoid any misunderstandings. That's why I'm asking the questions on the different contracts.
Commissioner, with all your respect, the, the only times when we qualify, in this case, vendors, is when it's a professional service, or it's, 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 in this case, kind of a construction that requires a civil engineering, civil engineering. So for this demolition, or for these hauling services, is that really, really a requirement to, to, to qualify vendors, as long as we...
Robert, yeah, and I think, I think, I think we're getting the gist, you know, these are not really significant, and they're not going to make a, you know, a great amount of difference in, in, in the story of our life. But, you know, can we have a motion, one way or another?
Mayor, I really don't see, forgive me, but I really don't see a difference between 18 and 19.
Well, and, and I, 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 I didn't say there was.
No, no, no.
I'm, I'm just saying, I wouldn't, I, I, I'm not, I'm not really, in my own personal idea, I'm not really that concerned with 18 or 19, in the sense that I do a lot of work in this kind of field, and I don't, I don't see, you know, but I mean, we'll, we'll follow the, the order of what the commission would like to do, we're, we're...
I'm going to approve.
We're, we're, okay, we're a team. There's a motion to approve, or do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. How many, you want to take roll call? Who says, who says, did we get four?
Are you conflicted?
Approve.
Approve, one, two, three, four? Okay, it passes. Next.
Item 20, consideration in action to award a contract for roof rehabilitation at Brownsville Historic Museum.
At the request of the grant administrator, Stephanie Reyes, the Public, the Purchasing and Contracting Services Department solicited formal invitation for bids for the roof rehabilitation of the historic Brownsville museum. The legal advertisement appeared on the, two times on the Brownsville Herald, and was posted on the city website. There was a previous meeting that was conducted on January the 25th, 2012. And sealed formal bids were open for the subject project on February the 9th, 2012, at the purchasing conference room. Three bids were received by the purchasing department and were tabulated for City Commission review. Staff recommendation is to award a contract for roof rehabilitation at the historic Brownsville museum to JNN King Roofing of Brownsville, Texas, the low responsible bidder, with a bid amount of $179,500. Completion time for this project shall be ninety consecutive calendar days. The architect cost estimate for this project is, was $196,867, which is higher than the recommended bid. That means that the bid came in under the, the engine, the architect's estimated amount. Funding for this project will be derived through the BCIC in the amount of $150,000, and the remaining balance will be paid through the Capital Improvement Fund Account 4580118384. And the administration of the grants department concurs with this recommendation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good move. Item 21, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of a vehicle scale for the Brownsville landfill.
At the request of the Public Works Director, Santana Torres, the Purchasing and Contracting Services Department solicited formal bids for the purchase, delivery, and installation of a vehicle scale for the Brownsville landfill. It is intent of the city of Brownsville landfill division to maximize the efficiency of their daily operations due to the increased demand of approximately a 45% increase of traffic over the last five years. Constructing a secondary vehicle scale at the landfill will, will enhance the city's ability to deal with heavy traffic flow, especially in cases of catastrophic events, such as a hurricane. In addition, construction of the second vehicle scale will address traffic congestions and delays. Project milestones are, the legal, the legal advertisement appeared twice on the Brownsville Herald and was posted on the website. Previous meeting was conducted on November, November 30th, 2012, and sealed formal bids were open for the subject project on January the 13th, 2012. We only received one bid for this particular, bid for this project. After only receiving one bid from one vendor, the Purchasing and Contracting Services Department solicited invoices from bidders to ensure the cities receive a competitive price. That's caused, that is called a price analysis. So by comparing the bidder's cost from the suppliers, the city was able to produce a cost analysis, and it is attached to the, to the analysis. The staff recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of a vehicle scale at the Brownsville landfill to wait and test solutions of Brownsville, Texas, the low responsible and responsive, and responsive bidder, with a bid amount of $81,575, with an alternate number one for additional modules in the amount of $12,691.09, for a total bid amount of $94,266.09. Completion time for this project is sixty consecutive calendar days upon the receipt of notice to proceed. And funding for this contract, it's available from the landfill tipping fee, Fund 44415-942. The administration of the Public Works Department concurs with this recommendation.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 22, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, installation, and training of a fingerprint system for the Brownsville Police Department.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioner Jerry Norega, Assistant Purchasing Director. At the request of Police Department interim chief Orlando Rodriguez, the Purchasing and Contracting Services Department has solicited a GSA proposal for the subject project. Under Section 791.025, Contracts of Purchase of the Texas Government Code, the bidding requirement has been satisfied by the Texas Local Government Purchasing Cooperative or General Services Administration. The Brownsville Police Department has worked together with Cogent System representatives to develop technical system specifications for a fingerprinting system for the subject project. The project consists of the purchase, delivery, installation, and training of a new fingerprinting system to replace the department's outdated system. Cogent System is a GSA awarded contract under Schedule 70. Staff recommendation is to consider, is to consider, to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, installation, and training of a fingerprinting system for the Brownsville Police Department to Cogent Systems of Pasadena, California, in the amount of $46,734.09 and $20,390 to Spillman Technologies of Salt Lake City, Utah, captive vendor, as per Local Government Code, Chapter 2252.022, to create the interface for the fingerprinting system for a total price of $67,124.09. This procurement reflects GSA contract pricing as per Schedule 70. Funding for this project is available from a federal grant, Account Number 01-9111-848-185, and the remaining balance of $2,894.01 from Account Number 01-310-706. The administration of the Police Department concurs with this recommendation. Any questions?
Hear a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Quick question. We have page seven on here, that says future agenda items, and that threw me off a little bit. Is that just a reminder for the city secretary? Yes. Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me tell you where that originated. When I was at the mayor's conference, one of the things that I think a lot of them said was, you know, how do you handle, you know, when you, as opposed to kind of going the Friday before the, the Tuesday before you come here? And so I had asked Estella, because the mayor, Corpus Christi, says, we don't make them action items, we don't make them public hearing items, but we'll tell you what they are ahead of time. So that helps the directors and plan ahead of time, and organize their stuff for the following two weeks. So that's, you know, that's how that...
Basically, we're still conducting business?
Same as always.
Okay.
It, it just gives you a little bit of notice ahead of time, so in case there's something that we can do and talk about, without, you know, any violation of any law.
Oh, we're talking?
Right.
Okay. Go to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Quick question. We have page seven on here, that says future agenda items, and that threw me off a little bit.